This young man missed most of the season last year and he was sorely missed. He was the 2010 Rookie of the Year, Buster Posey. Buster. Buster, Buster. Stand right here. So, what we would like to do for Buster is welcome him back after this injury. And we're gonna do this in a very special way. Buster, this is for you. We've practiced this. It's gonna be good, okay? So, all I need for you to do is to take just a practice swing. So, act like you've got a bat and then take a practice swing, okay? Go ahead. All right, you guys ready?
Yeah.
Seriously. Okay, ready? Go. He hits it. He hits it. And he hits it. Well, welcome. This is the 2012 version of the San Francisco Giants you're looking at. And we thank you all for coming. There are high expectations with this group. They set the bar a couple of years ago. And it was a glorious run. And I'm sure we'd all like to see it happen again. So, right now, let's meet these guys. That's right. And so, I'm gonna start up. It says here to ask Jeremy Affeld how his hand is doing. I'm not gonna ask that. How's your brain doing?
Uh, good. I worked on it this offseason.
Did you?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, how's the hand?
Oh, hand's great. Good doctors, um, a good son to keep me humble. He explains to me every day how he's gonna be smarter than me when he gets older and use the table to cut the hamburger meat, not my hand.
Look, I mean, he's a family guy, right? You're trying to separate hamburgers, right? To cook for the family.
Yeah, I thought I was serving my family, to be honest with you.
Are you glad to be back because this is a great bunch of guys or because this team can win?
Both. I mean, you know, Wilson's laughing at me because I stabbed myself still in the front row right now. So, I'm glad I bring comedy relief to him. But no, I'm happy to be back because, for one, everybody's healthy. I think everybody's excited to kind of repeat what we did in 2010. I think we have a similar team to what we had then. And I just, I think we have a good group of guys, good characters, obviously good personalities. We have a lot of fun. Man, I don't know what you can't not like about this team.
Eric Surkamp, well, you walk into a clubhouse of defending world champions and a lot of these guys you knew more on TV before you actually get to see them naked. And now, all of a sudden, you come into a big league camp. Was there one guy in this club you went to yourself and said, "I wanna be like that guy"? Was there one guy? Come on.
Affeld?
There you go.
Why?
Well, you know, great guy, well-spoken, good-looking.
Yeah, yeah. He can hit, right?
No.
No?
Do I need to tell you my numbers?
Let's hear 'em.
Career 270 hitter, averaged 500 on base percentage, I got two game-winning RBIs, I'm batting 1,000 with runners in scoring position.
Pretty solid.
Is that a fact? Yeah.
Seriously?
Check the books.
We also did check that there is a fact running around the Bay Area that upon one at bat last year, you took a swing that was so ugly against a left-handed pitcher that there was 800 little leaguers that quit baseball and took up soccer.
I did scream like a girl, but that's bad because Bochy set me up. He made me... Well, it's not bad. It's just a high-pitched scream. I mean, sorry about it. So, I don't know how else to describe it. But Bochy threw me against a lefty on lefty and it was a sidearm. I was scared. I mean, it happens.
Yeah, but I taught... He did it on purpose.
Oh, he had way better Runzlers, though, right?
Well, yeah.
Surkamp said that, way better Runzer swing.
Yeah, but Runzer got hurt, Giants won the World Series, right?
Good point.
Yeah. Clay Hensley, newest Giant, originally drafted by the Giants. You look good in that uniform.
This one, right?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no.
So, you heard about this Giants clubhouse. What'd you hear about it before you got over to it?
Well, obviously, you know, playing against these guys for as long as we have, there's a lot of personalities on this team. And, you know, I'm just looking forward to being a part of it. These guys seem like they cut up, have a lot of fun, and win some ballgames. So, it's gonna be exciting.
It is exciting. And sometimes the plane rides are as exciting as what you see on the field.
I can only imagine.
Eli Whiteside, you had a chance to play behind Buster Posey. You played a lot last year with Chris Stewart. What is the one thing that you learned last year when all of a sudden you're starting to play all the time? Was there something that you went, "Oh, my goodness, this is different"?
Well, you always have respect for the guy that you're playing behind, but I think you even have that much more respect for the guy when you're sitting out there, going out there every day, day in and day out, behind the plate. And a guy like Buster, what he did the year before and playing every day was something special. And you got a lot of respect for a guy like that.
Yeah. Avi Lopez, you know, I mean, you could've gone someplace else. And I remember the look on your face when you got traded to the Giants in 2010. And there were guys in the clubhouse in Atlanta and they were hooting and hollering and having fun and arguing. And I looked at you and I said, "Is this okay with you? I mean, are you glad to be here?" And you were psyched. So, I'm assuming that that had a lot to do with you coming back.
Yeah, I mean, there's no doubt, obviously, the personalities that we have sitting in front of you, everybody up here on the stage. These guys are great. I mean, I've never been in a clubhouse that's been so loose and so fun to be in. And that was definitely one of the reasons I wanted to be back.
All right, I'm here with Jeremy Affeld. Now, after the hand injury, how badly did they tease you?
Thanks, Matt. I actually, I didn't really see much of the harassment because, one, they left me. They said, "You don't get to go on the road trip." I think they're just looking for an excuse not to take me on the road trip. But, two, then I come into my locker and there's seven Slice-O-Matic. Yeah, courtesy of Matt Kane. So, that's kinda put it, that's about what happened there on that one.
That's good, Matt Kane. Really, that is really good.
And, I mean, what does that mean? When you are the guy, and tenure and having years in the big leagues means so much to everybody in that clubhouse, and you are the elder statesman, what does that mean to you?
I look back at my career and, you know, it just seems like to me it just started. But then you get to about halfway through it and you think, "I still feel like a rookie." Then you get as old as I am now and then you kind of realize you're not a rookie, but you don't feel like you should be, you know, 12, 13 years in the big leagues now. It's been able to win a World Series here in 2010 and with this organization, this group of guys, it was heck of a ride for me being in last place in my whole career. And it's just been a blast.
Angel Pagan.
What up?
Came to the Giants by way of the New York Mets. A lot of pressure playing in New York, a lot of pressure playing here in San Francisco. How do you think the two cities are different?
I don't think they're any different, you know. Both fans are passionate for the game. And the fans just ask you to play the game hard, with the heart. And that's what I do. You know, I like playing like that. They call me the crazy horse. I only have one speed to play. It's 100%.
Crazy Horse, that will not be the last time you hear that.
Yeah. There's another character in the house, fellas.
And this is the guy right here. It's gonna make it stick. You know, one of the things, now, you had a chance to play some centerfield in this park. It's very large out there. Is that something you like, where there's a lot of area out there to run around?
There's no difference, you know, between city field and this park. There's a lot of room to gallop.
Right.
I believe that I have, I have a lot of speed and I believe in my speed. And I just wanna make the pitchers feel that they can just throw any pitch and whenever it's in the air, I got it.
Kinda like me, right? Just like having me out there. It's in the air, I'm getting it. Pablo, what are you laughing at? Don't make me lay into you right now, buddy.
Pablo Sandoval.
Hello.
You went to Japan. Taiwan.
Yeah.
So, did you, I mean, was it fun?
Yes.
And you played left field?
Yeah.
What, seriously, what manager would allow you to play left field?
No one. I swear to God, no.
So, do you know the name of the manager that allowed you to play left field?
Yes, right here.
He's right here.
Yeah. I just asked her, "I wanna play one day off field."
And did you get a play?
Yeah, I get a fly ball. I went like, "Huh, it's tough play off field." Now, I know how that feel now.
So, did you make the play?
No.
Well, you always told us you could play centerfield.
No, 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 no.
You did. You have a tattoo that says you could play centerfield.
Yeah, yeah. No, 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 no.
All right, so, you're in shape and you're ready to go.
Yes.
So, if the season started tomorrow, you're ready to go.
Yes, ready to go.
And you can say that to that guy right there.
He know.
He knows.
I know that.
So, I'm here with Angel Pagan. It's Angel, not Angel, right?
Whatever you want me to call, you know, whatever's easy for you.
I kinda like Angel, though. I like that a lot. But it's okay if I do that?
Well, I get that question a lot, you know. Angel, Angel, whatever's easy for you.
Okay, sounds good. Well, we're happy to have you here in San Francisco. What attracted you to coming out here to play for the Giants and in this great city?
Well, I think this team is great, you know. There's a lot of balance, you know, in the team. Pitchers, hitting, everything. And it's got the right combination to win a championship. So, I mean, I'm ready for 2012 and just ready for the season start.
Mr. Bear, where are the Giants gonna finish this year?
Numero uno.
Yeah. Did you not say that last year?
I say it every year.
And you said it in 2010.
And I said it in 1962?
Yeah.
63. How many, I'm curious, how many of you grew up as a Giants fan? So, that's kind of my, my world is, I grew up with the Giants and it was Mays, McCovey, Marichal, then it was, fast forward, Will Clark, Matt Williams, Robbie Thompson.
What about 1985 with Krukow, Kuiper, Wellman, you know, and they lost 100 games?
I love that. I love all Giants teams. I love that team. It wasn't the first team that came to mind when I was thinking of our history.
So, as being the guy in charge, what's, is there anything different than a year ago?
You know, not really, Kuiper. I gotta say, and seeing all the guys today for the first time in a while, you know, my job really is just to make sure we have the resources and stay out of the way. Let them do what they need to do. It's, you know, it's a great group. We have two guys here who, by the way, were extended through 2013. How about that, Brian and Bruce? Brian's the veteran general manager in the game of baseball. And Bruce has been a manager for a long time, consecutive years. So, you know, it's really get, stay, make sure we have the right people in charge. We have the right people in charge. And so, my job is relatively easy in that respect. I just gotta make sure that we have enough dollars to pay these guys. And I think we do. I think the checks will cash, guys.
You got a couple bucks, Mike?
I got a couple bucks.
Okay, good. We're in.
He was a great boss. We spent a lot of money. Every dime.
Well, Brian, you've been around now as general manager 17 years, and that is more than anybody else in the game. How has the game changed in 17 years?
It hasn't changed all that much when you get around a group like this. But I think the media, the exposure, which is a great thing for these guys, but everybody, you know, anybody that is involved with the game day to day, you're under such a microscope that, you know, you really have to be on your best behavior. Don't wanna end up on YouTube like Bochy did in Jackson Hole skiing. But that's another story. But it hasn't changed that much.
Is that on YouTube?
We don't know yet. They're not sure who it is.
Everybody goes home and Youtubes Bruce Bochy skiing and see what we get.
Wow.
What Brian's talking about is, I've never skied and I was up in Jackson Hole. So, I said, "I'll give it a try." And I get off the lift and I just, it was a garage sale. Everything went flying. I busted. So, I go to get up and a chairlift comes around and whacks me on the head. So, now it knocks me down the hill. I'm sliding belly-first down the hill. So, you know, they're checking, you know, how many fingers they got up. So, it's my last day of skiing, I promise.
So, you know, you can't even actually say you skied.
I skied on my belly. Yeah, no, I did it. I got it down. I, you know, I concur.
You do not have a body built for skis. I'm sorry. Oh, my word. Of course, you were a catcher for a long time. So, I mean, if you could do that, you could ski. Come on.
No, I agree. And that's why I should've got a lesson. I said, "I can get up there and do this." So, I went up there without a lesson. And, you know, I learned a lesson there.
This offseason, Tim Flannery and his band went out and they did a number of appearances. The last couple, he actually had top billing over Bob Weir, the Grateful Dead legend. And they wound up raising over $60,000 for Brian Stowe. So, Tim Flannery, nice going, my friend.
Hey, baby.
So, Flan, we're gonna start with you. I mean, you're going through this tour. And, I mean, this is something you always wanted to be, outside of always wanting to be a baseball player, is a musician. And you were making your living doing it.
I just love doing it. We don't make a living out of it. We just have fun. I don't golf, you know. So, if you're not gonna golf, you gotta do something the offseason. And I only hit nine home runs as a player. So, I can't write a big check to help Brian Stowe, but I can come with energy. And we just bring the music. And you people showed up and brought the dollars. And it was a great chance to help a great cause. And I got to go see him and talk with him yesterday because today's, we start Fan Fest. Why not go spend the day with one of our great fans?
Well done, my friend. Well done. You know, Mike and I get a chance to, you know, to speak occasionally around Northern California. And I think it's safe to say that when you do these benefits, the amount of Giants fans and their interest is absolutely amazing. And you get a chance to meet them, and it's great.
It really is. It's an opportunity to talk baseball in the middle of the music through the offseason, kind of keep the light burning. But it's a great chance to be able to look in people's eyes. The amazing fans and the passion that's up here, it's unlike any place I've ever been.
All right. I wanna ask Hensley Mullins a question. Look, I mean, we watch you guys. I mean, you guys are here at, you know, a 7:15 game. A lot of you, a lot of the coaches are here by 1 o'clock in the afternoon, sometimes noon. And that's a long day. But it never seems to bother you if the cage is full by 2 o'clock in the afternoon?
Well, that's my job. I need to, you know, be prepared, you know, in order what we face in that day, pitching-wise, opposing pitchers. And watch film, you know, we have 13 hitters. So, I gotta watch each one of them and try to correct things that are not right. So, you know, it's a lot of work. I'm happy to do it. And I know they're happy that I'm doing it so that make their day easier.
Mark Gardner. You and Dave Righetti have an incredible responsibility, and that's protecting the arms of one of the best staffs ever in Giants history. Does it get a bit overwhelming at times, the responsibility?
No, I don't think so. Not with this group. They all do their work. They're on top of their game. They stay in shape. Very low maintenance. There's a couple guys that need a little extra attention, but it's never all of them at once.
Wait, 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 who are those guys?
I don't wanna name names, Jeremy Affeld. No, these guys are really good. And, you know, they stay in shape and we've been very fortunate.
Roberto Kelly, you're back. You have speed on this team. What is it about speed that you like?
Well, I think it makes the game very exciting. That was my part of my game. And when you have a team, you don't need to get three, four hits and then to score a run. Get a guy on base, steal a base, and you can score a run that way. So, I'm very excited about this ball club. I'm sure the fans are, you know, see guys running around the bases. So, you're looking forward to it.
How long will it take you to get familiar with Melkey and Angel Pagan?
Not long at all. I just gotta talk to him a few times. And, I mean, once in a game for a while, you know exactly what the guys need to do. You just need to find out what they need to know about the pitchers, their move and stuff like that. And we go from there.
All right. Thanks, Roberto. Well, Ron Rotis has been here. Ron Rotis came to the Giants when Mike had dark hair. That's a fact. Can't deny it. Sorry, Mike. It sounds like I'm dogging you. I'm not. I swear. But you've been here a while. And you've seen a lot of things. And you got a world championship ring. He was here when he had dark hair. He was here. That's right. So, I mean, talk a little bit about how this organization has progressed to where the Giants are at right now.
Well, first off, for a guy that has no musical talent and only speaks one language and throws terrible batting practice, I'm happy to be here for the length of time that I have been. I won't even get into personality, but I will say this. It has been a long run. And I've been very fortunate to be here as long as Brian's been here, a couple of years after he took over. But where we're at now compared to when I first came to the major leagues, it's night and day.
Yeah.
I mean, we started off at Candlestick and we made the move to the new ballpark thanks to Larry and everybody in San Francisco that got that done. What a change it was. And of course, winning the World Series and where we're at now, it's a great place to be.
I mean, don't you think all of a sudden the perception went from, "Okay, the Giants are gonna have a nice season," to now, all these people here, these guys in uniform, now it's a disappointment if you don't get to postseason? And that's, that means you've come a long way.
No question. And that's all anybody can ask, whether you're a player or a coach or a fan. Everybody wants to win. And on top of the expectation and where we're at, the expectation to win is what we all believe. And that's hard to get in an organization. And when you lose it and you go bad for a lot of years, it's hard to get back. You know, we had it for a period of time here. And then we had some lean years. Well, we got it back now. And I think we're gonna be better and hold on to this longer than we did in the past as well.
Well, this is the Beard Group. And you guys look great. You look in shape. You've done your homework. Justin Christian, we're gonna start with you.
Okay.
Last year was, you know, the first time you came to San Francisco and put on a Giants uniform. And you got to play in front of the hometown crowd, being a home, a Bay Area kid. What did that mean to you?
That was, that was actually a dream come true, you know, growing up here in the Bay Area and rooting for the Giants as a little boy coming to Candlestick and watching the greats, you know, like Will Clark and Robbie Thompson and Matt Williams and so on and so on. But for the most part, I just, I was very blessed, you know. You watch, you come to the games and you actually watch those players. And you think, "Man, I can actually get there if I work hard." And sure enough, that was reality this year, or last year.
Sergio Romo, tell us about your new baby.
What? He's, he's chunky.
Wait a minute, he's what?
He's pretty dang chunky.
He's chunky?
Yeah. He's my little butterball.
Well, you said he's a good baby. You're getting sleep.
He sleeps. Sleeps real well.
What's the difference between two as opposed to one?
Well, there's two kids that I passed on the whole hyperactivity thing to. One of them doesn't even know how to move yet. And he's going nuts. So, I mean, kinda set him up the wrong way.
That's what's gonna keep you in shape the next few years.
Keep me on my toes and shape. I mean, how much I'm willing to chase him is the question.
Oh, I love that guy.
I might just let him run.
No, Serge. Don't ever change, Serge. We like you the way you are, baby. And then there's Chris Stewart. You had fun last year, I assume. You got to play a lot.
Absolutely a blast, man. You know, starting the year in Fresno, not thinking anything might happen. Going out there grinding every day, waiting for my chance. Obviously, you know, one of the best catchers in the game goes down. You never wanna see that, especially if it's in your own organization. But, you know, I'm down there, you know, that's my opportunity to try to take advantage of. And got to come up here, play in front of all you great fans out there. Couldn't ask for a better, better end of the season last year for myself.
Well, you had a nice year. Nice job. Brian Wilson, your offseason was very entertaining.
Yep. Is this on?
Yes, it is. I got to see you sell Mexican food. I got to see you in a Celtics uniform. I got to see you in a...
That was gorgeous.
An LSU football uniform, helmet, the whole nine yards, pads, hysterical. You do not lead a boring life.
No. You'd be surprised.
But you did tell me before the season ended that you were gonna go to Africa. And you were gonna go on a hunt and look for a lion with one bullet, no guide.
Don't you laugh at that. That was the plan. I had it mapped out. I was gonna go there, no guides, one bullet. And I was gonna leave it up to fate. And I didn't go.
Well, let me ask you this. If you're gonna go to Africa with one bullet and you could take one teammate as bait, who would that be?
He already knows. It's Affeld. Real meaty.
Hey, I think you got a new nickname, pal. Bait. And that's it. Let me, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask Sergio. Sergio, let me ask you this. If you could get away with shaving Wilson's beard in the middle of the night without him getting mad, would you do it? You would not do it.
No, I'm not gonna be the end of that.
No?
Great answer.
I'll let him be the end of it.
What kind of question is that? What if we were to take away your beautiful hair?
I would be mad. Hey, another question like that, we'll be calling you bait. That's right. All right, I volunteer. I'll go to Africa with Affeld. Not a problem. You're the youngest guy in this group. Have you reached the point now where you feel like you can say whatever you want to any of these guys?
No.
No? No? Who specifically are you really careful with what you say something to?
Probably him, 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 him.
You do know that they were all asked a question. If they're going cross-country in an old truck, what teammate would they take? You got selected unanimously.
Oh, yeah. Of course.
And why is that?
I don't know.
Because he could fix the truck when it breaks down. So, in all honesty, in 2010, you got called up. Your best friend was probably the catcher. I mean, you guys both young. You didn't have to worry about what you said to him. And I'm talking about Buster Posey. Would that be right?
Yeah, yeah.
So, when he came out to the mound, everything was good?
Hmm? Yeah.
Okay. Did you ever argue with him?
No, why would I argue with him?
Well, maybe you didn't like what he said. And maybe you didn't like a pitch he wanted you to throw.
I don't think so.
No? Buster, you got it made, man. You really do. All right. Go ahead, Mike. Matt Kane, you've been here longer as a Giant than anybody.
Matt Kane, you've been here longer as a Giant than anybody. Yet you're one of the younger guys. How's that work?
I mean, it feels good except for when you're around him. He's-
He makes you feel old?
It's constant babies. I mean, I have a baby at home and she's a lot easier to take care of than him. So then I pass him on to Affeld and they two kids together.
How about Liskov? Do you have to take care of him too?
No. You don't have to take care of Timmy. He just let Timmy do his thing and eating cheese sticks before it starts and doing his thing. He's, he'd go out there and throw eight shutout, punch out 12.
Make sure there's a taco taco.
Yeah.
Seriously, it's probably not a good time to ask this, but I'm gonna ask it. When you got, I remember you when you could hit. No, seriously. I mean, when Matt Kane came up, we were, Mike and I would say, "Man, this guy can hit."
Do we really want to go into this right now, Mike?
No, no. I'm just wondering. It was like, is it just like, what happened?
Well, we can just put it in normal numbers. I mean, how many of Matt's did you have in your career?
About 4,000.
How many have I had?
Uh, probably-
300?
250, 300, maybe. Are we going the homerun route?
Homer ratio, yeah, I mean, we're-
So anyway. Really, one of the great stories was Ryan Vogel song this, last year. It absolut, I mean, when you, when you look at Ryan Vogel song and what he did last year, it really is the true definition of the comeback player of the year, three years, five, 10, and he didn't win it. Well, we know that he should have won it. And, I mean, you look back and last year is like, I mean, do you just like take sections of it and go, "That was great, that was great, that was great, that was great?"
Yeah, I do.
I mean, seriously, there were like 20 great things.
Now, when I thought about this winter, I was like, at the beginning of the year, if I could write down what I wanted the year to be like, last year was it minus the World Series Championship. It really was.
Was there one point in the offseason where you just kind of woke up in the middle of the night going, "Whoa"? Because you, you wouldn't even address some of the things that were happening to you last year because it was coming at you so fast and you just kept staying the, the procedure, doing the drills, doing the routine.
I didn't want to jinx it. I was scared if I talked about it enough, I'd really start to think about it and realize what was really going on and then I would just totally get in Affeld zone. Start spinning around in my head, so I just decided I wasn't gonna really talk about it too much or think about it too much. Just show up and get, try and get guys out and go from there.
So what, what is the offseason like for you? Is it just kickback and just, "I'm gonna relax because it's all gonna happen starting around the middle of March"?
Uh, yeah, definitely. I went up there. I was just glad to be home, you know, be around my friends, family. You know, I got a small amount of family up there, so just being able to be around them as much as I was this offseason was, was great. You know, outside of that, I really didn't do much. I spent a lot of time in my house, spent time with my puppies and, you know, a lot of time with my friends.
You get the itch? I mean, do you start to go, "You know what? I want to get there. I want to get to Arizona."
Yeah, I think it's, you know, right around the time the snow starts falling in Seattle and you're just, you watch cars going to ditches and-
Yeah, that's-
Just like, I think it's about time to go get some sun.
Yeah.
Which obviously I haven't gotten any of.
Brandon Bell went to Winter Ball. He played in the Dominican for, I don't know, maybe over a month, a little over a month?
Yeah, six weeks.
And we asked him if, how, how he liked the food in the Dominican Republic and he said he ate at Champ's. Is that true?
Yeah, that's true. I pretty much don't venture off from my normal eating habits.
Well, what would you order at Champ's?
Quesadillas.
Quesadillas?
Yeah.
Pablo, he ordered quesadillas at Champ's. Is that good? You don't know? Okay, good.
They were good.
So you did well. You, you enjoyed it?
Yeah, it was a lot of fun. You know, it was one of those things where, they love baseball down there and it was just fun. It was a good atmosphere to go out and play in front of those fans every night and, you know, if you played well, they liked you. If you didn't, they let you know about it, so it had a little bit more intensity.
Brandon Crawford. Congratulations.
Newlywed.
You're a newlywed.
Thank you.
You're off the streets. Last year, you got to the big league level and, tell us about it. What was it about the big leagues that was big?
How about Milwaukee? That was pretty big.
Yeah, that was big. It was, it was a fun game.
I mean, you're like an honorary cheesehead, man. First at bat? Was it first at bat?
Third at bat.
Third at bat? Third at bat.
Unless we're talking about a lineup.
Was that a grand slam?
It was, yeah.
All right, tell us about that. Tell us, come on.
I mean, it was, it was what you dream about as a little kid, you know, coming up your first game and hitting a grand slam. I mean, you wouldn't even, I mean, who could have thought that would happen?
Higher.
All right.
So, yeah, and then, I mean, it helped us, helped us win the game and, I mean, it was, it was awesome. Yeah. And, and, you know, I said this before, you know, you do that as your first major league hit and it's usually downhill from there. So, how many grand slams did you hit after that?
Zero.
None, yeah. That's, that's my point. So, anyway, you're gonna have a lot of fun this year, so, so good luck to you, young man. You're gonna be good.
Thank you.
Nate Scherholz, congratulations, newlywed.
Thank you.
Nice going. You're off the street. And, and really, this is a question we should ask Brandon Crawford as well. Is it, do you think it's tougher to break into the big leagues as a big leaguer, playing for the team you root for as a kid?
Um, you know, not really. You know, the big leagues is the big leagues. It's, you know, our dream as a kid to play, you know, where we're at now and, you know, whether it's the Giants or, you know, the Marlins across the country, that's where you want to be. But for us, it's, it's special. I mean, we came, we grew up going to Candlestick, AT&amp;T and, you know, it's a dream come true playing here and I'm, you know, proud every day I put the uniform on. We've talked about it, you know, I think he feels the same way and it's just too bad we didn't play each other in high school. I'm a little older than him, but-
He says a lot older, pal.
Well, foothill, right, in San Ramon Valley High School, right?
Yeah.
Seriously? Wow. All right, we got Buster Posey here and- We really got tired of watching Buster Posey walk through the clubhouse either on crutches or on that little thing he had with wheels and it's fabulous seeing you walk normal. And I'm wondering, I'm just wondering, when you get up in the morning, how normal do you feel?
It's getting better. It's getting better all the time. I mean, it's, it's still, you know, we're in part of the recovery process and it's feeling good though. I'm happy with it.
Can you carry the two twins?
I can. I can. We got head support now. At first, we couldn't do it because they would, it's just not safe, but, yeah, I've managed it a couple of times now.
I mean, you, when you think about it, there's, there's a lot on your plate last year and, and because of the injury, you really did get a chance to be there for the birth, to, to see them when they're newly born. I mean, in a lot of ways, I'm sure that that probably was a good thing.
It was. I mean, I, obviously, I wouldn't, if I could go back, I wouldn't want to be injured, but the timing of it was, was great for, for me and my wife and, I mean, for all the parents, I mean, parenthood's not easy. You think that, you know, catching Affeld's hard, but- Being a dad's pretty tough at times, too. Not quite as tough.
So you got two twins. You don't get a lot of sleep. Before you had the babies, you didn't really like going on road trips, but now road trips mean more than going on the road. It means you're gonna get some sleep. Are you kind of half looking forward to that?
I am, but I'm dealing with some guilt as well because I know someone's gonna be getting up with them.
Yeah.
But it will be nice to catch up on some sleep.
You know, I, I've, I've said this to you privately. When you came to the Giants in 2010, when you think about the cast of characters, when you walked into that clubhouse from Pat Burle to Aubrey Huff to Mr. Wilson, I mean, these were guys that, safe to say they're a little different?
Pretty safe.
Pretty safe? I mean, and that's in a good way. Aubrey, that's in a good way. I, I have to imagine you're gonna, you're gonna think about that group for the rest of your life.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, I, I think we have so many guys that are back from that team and the most exciting thing is, is just the passion that everybody has and it makes it fun. I mean, it's, it's a group of guys that wants to win and, and I think Flan, or was it Wodas mentioned it earlier, that's what it's all about, is winning and we got a good group of guys to do that.
Well, I do know this is when the parade ended and, and a few of these guys here had a chance to speak and, and you spoke and I think you said something like, you know, in a couple of months, you know, we're gonna go at it again. And, and I think we all feel that that's probably how you feel about 2012 and we're glad that you're back.
Thank you.
One last question. One last question, then we're gonna ask them to do a favor. The last question is, would you rather get up in the middle of the night with two screaming twins or hit off Clayton Kershaw?
Kershaw? I, I want some of Kershaw. We owe him.
All right. Okay, you guys stay here. I'm gonna call up Jeremy Affeld. Aff, come on up here, okay? I mean, look, nobody takes more of a beating than Jeremy Affeld because he's kind of like the whipping boy in this clubhouse, but, you know, a lot of it's brought on by Jeremy Affeld. So, we said we were gonna do this one more time, so we're gonna watch Jeremy Affeld swing, right? Let's, give us a practice swing.
Well, I, I go to the plate first, right?
Well, yeah. All right. So, so, this is practice, so don't say anything. So, all right, let's see the practice swing.
Well, you gotta keep your hands in.
Okay.
You gotta squash the bug, right?
All right. So now, you ready?
Yeah.
You ready?
Yeah.
Lots of energy, just as good as when Buster hit his out and we remember how to do it, right?
Yeah.
Okay, here we go. And the pitch to Affeld. He hits it.
High.
He hits it.
Deep.
And he hits it.
Out of here.
Ladies and gentlemen, your 2012 San Francisco Giants.
This has been an exclusive presentation from SFG Productions.